I would like to call this village board meeting on Thursday, February 1st, 2024, to order. Mayor Chadwick Schmidt, please take the role.
Mayor Coker?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Sadeke?
Here.
Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Miratado?
Here.
Trustee Pogia?
Here.
Trustee Turner?
Here.
Please stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a quick statement first of all, I'd like to read. This is on the subject line, urgent call for Mayor Chadwick Coker's resignation. I'm currently calling upon Mayor Chadwick Coker to step down in light of the concerning reports detailing an altercation with Glendale Heights Police Chief George Pappas. This incident combined with previous reports of false police reports in August of 2023 has taken a toll on our community. Rather than addressing critical issues to enhance the quality of life in Glendale Heights, the mayor has become a constant source of distraction throughout one incident after another. It is evident that Glendale Heights requires a fresh start with the new mayor in 2025. In the interim, the city needs stability, which cannot be achieved with Chadwick Coker at the helm. I want to emphasize that in retrospect of any statement Mayor Chadwick Coker may make within the community, he does not reflect the values of the Democrat Party. He is not a representative of Bloomingdale Township Democratic Organization in any capacity. We as an organization hold a deep appreciation and respect for law enforcement. It is imperative for Mayor Chadwick Coker to resign immediately, allowing the community to move forward. Sincerely, Terrell Barnes, Bloomingdale Township Democratic Organization Chair. That was just sent to me, I thought I should share that and put that into the record.
And I have one too. Excuse me, on Friday, May 19, 2024, the village board became aware of additional misdemeanor charges against Mayor Chadwick Coker. Out of respect for the office of the mayor and our United States system of justice, the village board did not make any public statement. However, after numerous inquiries by the public, we feel the need to comment on Mayor Coker's most recent charge, battery to Police Chief George Pappas. Pursuant to our justice system, Mayor Coker, of course, has the presumption of innocence. However, the mayor has shown that he is a propensity to abuse village codes and policies. In an effort to safeguard and protect the interests of our village and its residents, we demand that the following safeguard is required. The mayor has a documented history of retaliation against employees. He is admonished not to engage in retaliation against any village employee. Village employees are protected against the retaliation pursuant to our policy, and any attempt to violate said policy should be reported to the village administrator. Considering the mayor's conduct, including his recent misdemeanor arrests for battery, the best interest of our community will be served by his immediate resignation. We ask that the mayor resign immediately for the betterment of the Village of Glendale Heights and assigned by all the trustees. Thank you.
Anybody else? From the board? No, okay. As I mentioned, I am duly legally constitutionally elected by the majority of Glendale Heights. Number two, I'm doing my best to serve my residents. Number three, my residents, the majority of the people, they are with me. And whenever I meet, I go to different events, gatherings, meetings. They say, "Mayor, don't give up, we are with you." There's the reason I'm here. Number three, are those charges all in sub judiciar, thus in the court? And Mr. Trustee Pogia mentioned presumption of innocence. That's my constitutional right. And I don't know when he knows why he's forcing me to resign. But they were forcing me to resign since I took oath. Even before that, they didn't want I take oath. Because I'm brown, mayor, number one, that's the reason. But I tell you one thing, I tell you one thing. I'm that guy, I'm that guy who does not use village code. I return that. I did not, I never filed my rich in my three, four year career. And my expenses are far less than the former mayor. This is everything undocumented. And still, I am not going to resign unless my resident in majority, they so. Then morally, I will think, but legally, I will fight back. I am fighting back. I'm not lying. Who will give up. You are not majority, you are loser. You lost that election. Okay, we get back to the community announcement, please. No, no, no.
No, no, no. I'm going to talk because you can talk. And you can throw me out in a second. Don't ever talk about race, because I'm browner than you. So stop with that discussion about racism. Number two, you didn't win the race by two. You stole it to me by two. Well, no, don't call me a loser. You don't have that right. I'm a citizen, just like the people right over here. You're going to call me a loser? Call him a loser.
I know, I just, I know. These are same people who have problems from the beginning. Okay, can we do the announcement? Yes, go ahead. Trustee Schmidt, please. Commit your announcement.
As a reminder to residents, please do not shovel snow, snowblow, or plow any snow onto village streets. This will help ensure our streets are clean and clear of any snow for safe driving. If you have any questions, please call the police department's non-emergency number at 630-260-6070. The Glendale Heights Police Department is cooling down for the annual Polar Plunge. Support our officers in the Polar Plunge as they raise funds for Special Olympics Illinois. In order to donate, please visit the village website at www.glandalehighs.org. Officers Pew and Sheen are both participating in the Super Plunge while 12 other officers are completing one-time plunges. If you have any questions or you would like to make a donation, please contact the Glendale Heights Police Department's non-emergency number at 630-260-6070. Thank you.
Stop by the Sports Hub on the first and third Tuesdays of each month for Glendale Heights seasonal market. Shop for food, produce, crafts, and more from locally sourced vendors. The market runs from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. If you would like to be vendor, or for more information, please contact
I'll look into it from my jump, by you. Yeah, he cannot talk like that way he's talking. He has to wait unless I pronounce his name.
Spring is right around the corner. Register today for Spring Outdoor Soccer. The regular season runs from April 13th through June 1st with five different grade levels. Register for the early bird fee before February 19th for a reduced rate. For more information or to register for Spring Outdoor Soccer, please contact the Sports Hub at 630-260-6060. I don't want you to, you don't pronounce my name. Yes.
Trustee Light?
Hey, batter, batter. Registered today for Glendale Heights Youth Baseball and Softball. We're offering six different leagues ranging from My First T-Ball Oh, there it is. Mine doesn't have that from it. Practices begin early April.
You can use this now.
Early April as weather allows. Early registration ends March 4th. So register before then and get the best price. For more information, please contact the Sports Hub at 630-260-6060. The Glendale Heights Police Department and Village of Glendale Heights wants to remind you, if you see something, say something. Although we do our best to be out in the community, we cannot be everywhere at once. This is why we rely upon you, the residents of the Village of Glendale Heights, to let us know what's happening. If you see something, if you ever see something that is suspicious, please do not hesitate to call 911 and let the officers investigate the matter. If you have any questions, please contact the Village of Glendale Heights Police Department non-emergency number at 630-260-60. And putting this out on Facebook is not the right direction. Please, call 911. It's really important, if you see something, say something. Thank you.
You're welcome. Chadwick Schmidt, please.
Register today for the village's new e-newsletter. On the first Monday of each month, we will email you information regarding the month ahead with news from the Village of Glendale Heights, various programs, events, and other important information. To register, please visit the village website at www.glandalehighs.org. If you have any questions, please contact the village's Public Relations Division at 630-909-5350. The next coffee and chat with the village president will be this Saturday, February 3rd, at the Linda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens from 10:00 a.m. to noon. If you are unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the village president or village board, please call the village president's office anytime at 630-909-5302.
Trustee. Marita, please.
You.
Register today for the Mother and Son Dance or the Daddy Daughter Dance. Be ready to have the time of your life at our medieval time, themed dances. Enjoy an activity filled evening complete with dinner and dessert. The Mother and Son Dance will be Friday, February 23rd from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. And the Daddy Daughter Dance will be Saturday, February 24th from 6:30 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. at Glendale Heights Golf Club. Please register by February 19th. The registration fee is $75 for residents, $80 for non-residents, and $35 for each additional child. For more information, please contact the Sports Hub at 630-260-6060. The Village of Glendale Heights will be hosting an informational meeting over the next several weeks to engage and discuss with the public the expiration of our current water rates and the future of water rates for the next five years. We invite the public to attend the meeting throughout the community so that we can directly answer any questions. Please join us on Thursday, February 15th in the Village Hall Council Chambers. Thursday, March 7th, at Omen's Clubhouse. And the second meeting in March will be determined. All meetings will be from 5:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Additional meetings may occur, so please visit our website at www.glandalehighs.org for any updates. Thank you.
Trustee Pogia.
The police department would like to remind residents of the parking regulations within the village during snowfall. There's no parking allowed on village streets designated as a snow route for 24 hours after a snowfall of one inch or more. There's no parking allowed on any village street for 24 hours after a snowfall of two inches or more. And there's no parking allowed on any village street for 72 hours after a snowfall of five inches or more. If you have any questions regarding winter parking restrictions, please contact the Glendale Heights Police Department's non-emergency number at 630-260-6070.
Trustee Shiro, please.
Senior citizens ages 65 or better are encouraged to apply for the Senior Citizens Utility Tax Rebate Program. Qualifying applicants will receive a $75 rebate check as part of this program if they meet the following guidelines. You must be age 65 or better, honored before December 31st, 2023, or have a spouse who is age 65. You must live in Glendale Heights for all of 2023 as either an owner or a rental. You have to have earned no more than $45,000 gross income during 2023, and the utilities billed and paid in their names. Applicants are being accepted now through April 30th. If you have any questions, please contact the Linda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens at 630-260-6050, or the Finance Department at 630-260-6000. Thank you.
You're welcome. Number two, I have the following proclamations. A, proclamation to proclaim the month of February as Black History Month. Number three, a proclamation to proclaim the month of February as American Art Month. Number four, a proclamation to proclaim the month of February as Punjabi Language Month. Number five, a proclamation to proclaim the week of February 11th through 17th, 2024 as National Salute to Veterans Patients. Number next, if there are no objection, I believe, I don't know, you have signed these proclamations. Number six, presentation, Valentines for Veterans. This is Ms. Jessica, oh, she's there. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, mayor, and good evening, everyone. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Jessica Marsage, and I'm a recreation supervisor for the Leisure Services Department. In that role, I work on a number of community events for the village. As the mayor and the village board proclaimed, February 11th through 17th is National Salute to Veteran Patients Week in Glendale Heights. To show their appreciation, residents of Glendale Heights and surrounding communities have taken time out of their days to send a little appreciation through Valentines. The idea to collect Valentines started in the village over 20 years ago. Schools, nonprofits, and individual residents have stepped up over the years and created beautiful Valentines for our residents. Each Valentine was made in the hope of making the veteran who received them feel loved and appreciated. I want to take this opportunity to give a big thank you to everyone who participated in making the Valentines this year, including Markwood School District 15, Queen Bee School District 16, Glenbar District 87, St. Matthews Parish School, Glendale Heights Junior Women's Club, Kiwanis Club of Glendale Heights, Glendale Heights Girl Scouts, Cub Scout Pack 420, Glendale Heights Sports Hub Preschool, Glendale Heights Sports Hub Path Program, and the Linda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens members. We have collected hundreds of Valentines from these groups and others, with more still coming in. We even received 243 handwritten Valentines from one individual. All of the Valentines collected will be mailed to Illinois Veteran Homes and Veteran Hospitals. Each Valentine, wherever it ends up, will remind the veteran that they are remembered and appreciated. Thank you again to everyone who dropped off their Valentines, and I have brought in some for the community to enjoy as well. Mayor, would you and the board like to share some of the wonderful cards that are in front of you?
Yes, hello veterans. Happy Valentine's Day. I hope you have a great day and get lots of sweets. Thank you from the bottom of my heart for your services to our country. Is from Kim in Glendale Heights.
Hey, Bill. Trustee Schmidt, will you start from that end, Bill, and work your way this way?
Roses are red, violins are blue. Thank you for your service and all that you do. Now, the inside is a nicely decorated garden now. Thank you.
Thank you so much for helping in the war. Realize that you are, you are an amazing person, and we admire more people like you the most. Have a great Valentine's Day. Sarah, sixth grader, Glenside Middle School. This is nice.
Well, it just says Happy Valentine's Day with a massive heart cut out on the front with a nice little moment of reading there for on the inside. It says, "I can live without fear every day because of you and people like you who have served in our military. I appreciate you." And this is from Afrin. I don't know, does it say what school, but Afrin, excellent job, thank you.
Mine is some of the finest print I've ever seen in my life. The front has a sticker of a shark, and it says, "I hope you have a jawsome Valentine's Day." And then it has a joke, "Why are fish so easy to weigh? Because they have their own scales." And then it says, "Thank you for all that you do for our country. Know that you are in our thoughts, in our hearts, today and every day. Happy Valentine's Day, Jess."
Mine is a heart with Happy Valentine's Day, and the message is, "Thank you for taking care of this country, and all the effort you make is greatly appreciated." With another heart and an American flag.
Hey, here's another one, Happy Valentine's Day with a heart on it. And it says, "Thank you for your bravery and courage in the war. With all your courageous acts, we may not be here today." Then it just said, "No name, just Glenside student."
This one says Happy Valentine's Day. God bless you, Happy Valentine's Day. Thank you so much for your service. From a St. Matthew's student, and this person put a lot of work into this one here.
Yours has a lot of hearts on it. Mine has a few, but it's beautiful. Happy Valentine's Day. It says, "You are our hero." Thank you. Thank you for your sacrifices and all of your services to protect our freedom. And they didn't sign it, they wanted to be anonymous, okay?
Thank you all for reading that. I hope you all enjoyed just a few of the many cards that we received, and I really appreciate the opportunity to showcase this wonderful program. Have a good night.
Thank you, everyone that worked on that.
Number six, sorry, seven, presentation of lifesaving award to Officer Zachary Shone. Mr. Chief.
Thank you, mayor, thank you, village board, for the opportunity to recognize the exemplary actions of one of our officers. On Monday, January 15th, officers were dispatched to the 100 block of West Stevenson Drive for an 83-year-old male in full arrest. Officer Zachary Shone was patrolling in the area and arrived within seconds. Officer Shone found Mr. Hashmi to be unresponsive and without any vital signs. Officer Shone immediately began CPR by administering chest compressions. Officer Shone continued chest compressions upon the arrival of the Glenside paramedics and continued this effort upon their request. Through his lifesaving measures, Officer Shone and the Glenside paramedic detected a pulse on Mr. Hashmi. Officer Shone continued to assist Glenside paramedics with life-sustaining efforts after resuscitation by assisting in the regulating of breathing levels for Mr. Hashmi. This quick and decisive action by Officer Shone helped to preserve the life of one of our residents. Not only did Officer Shone remain calm, he showed great teamwork with the Glenside paramedics to care for Mr. Hashmi. I'd like to recognize Officer Zachary Shone for his professionalism, dedication, and determination to save the life of one of our residents. I'm going to ask if Mr. Hashmi is in, I'm sorry. Mr. Hashmi is in rehabilitation right now, but his daughter is here, so I'm going to ask if she can come up here too. Her name is Jay Bean. Officer Shone is going to be presented a plaque. It's a lifesaving award plaque, and it says, "By and through your actions and dedication to duty, took substantial steps which led to the preservation of life." Officer Shone is also going to proudly wear a lifesaving fan on his uniform for his efforts.
Donation by Beverly Pappas to Glendale Heights T-Ball Program. Director Keith.
Thank you, mayor and board, for this opportunity to once again recognize and thank one of our dedicated residents for something she has done to help increase participation in Glendale Heights Youth Softball and Baseball, or GHYBS. As I'm sure everyone recalls, Bev Pappas attended a board meeting last fall and announced she was donating $1,000 to create a way to help residents get into the baseball program here in Glendale Heights. I would ask Bev to come up and join me here at the podium so I can let her know, as well as the community, how we will be dealing with that donation and the plan to increase participation. Before I go any further, I got to introduce Eric Sloyan to Bev a little bit ago, so I want to introduce Eric Sloyan at this time. He is the Recreation Supervisor who is in charge of youth athletics here for the Sports Hub. And Eric joined the Leisure Services Team in September and brings a wealth of knowledge and experience to the village. Bev, the Recreation Team, after your donation announcement, went to work on how we could best get youth back into baseball and softball. And after a great deal of discussion, we are happy to announce that we will be offering two introductory-level baseball programs at no charge to the residents to sign up before the early bird deadline. Those two programs are My First T-Ball for kids ages three and four. This introductory program will have players learning the basics of baseball and softball in a social, fun, and educational way. Players will be on teams where they can work together and have fun both on and off the field. The second program at GHYBS, T-Ball, which is for players ages five and six. This will take beginners and those that have been playing for a short time, and again focus on learning the basics. Gameplay will be stressed a little more at this level as they continue to progress their way through the baseball levels of GHYBS. We feel that building a strong youth base at the introductory levels will help to build back a strong GHYBS program for the future. And Bev, your donation is a great help in making that possible. So for those that are watching, you might be asking, "Well, how do I sign up to play in either of these two programs or to sign up for one of the other levels of baseball that GHYBS offers?" Which is all the way to the 13 and 14-year-old Pony Program. There are several ways to sign up, but two of the ways that are the easiest are to stop by the Sports Hub and fill out the forms, or to go online, which is the first, this is the first time we've done an online registration. We want to make this as easy as possible for those that want to play. Please note that the fees listed on the screen are for the entire GHYBS program. Through Bev's donation, we are able to offer the three- to six-year-old programs at no cost to the residents this year for those who sign up by March 4th of 2024. Additional information will be going out to the schools over the next couple of weeks. So be sure to check your backpack mail for signup information or call the Sports Hub at six three oh two six oh six oh six oh. Bev, thank you again for your donation. And in closing, I would like to thank the Glendale Heights Parks and Recreation Committee under Trusty Meritato's leadership for their support of the GHYBS program. And they wanted me to be sure to invite you to throw out one of the first pitches to kick off the baseball season later this spring. Again, thank you for your generous donation and all that you do for this community.
Well, I wanna say.
We also need parents to help with all these children. I think of my camera and I think of um nozzles, gym nozzles, and my husband. They were all managers and coaches. And we need parents to be there to cheer them on and to help. We need scorekeepers, we need a lot. We're gonna make this Glendale Heights back to our little baseball team again. That's me, yeah. So thank you all.
Bev, I just wanna say one thing on behalf, Bev. I just wanna say one thing on behalf of the Park and Rec Committee, all the members. We say thank you for the donation. And that money will all be spent.
Thank you.
And thank you for your services, you know, for the kids. It's great help.
And I can hardly wait to pour weeds at Roskin.
So next is uh. Next is uh, is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board meeting on agenda items only? Anyone from public? None? Uh, you have the concept agenda before you vote acting village administrator, Mr. Flint. Please read the concept agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. One, approval of the regular board meeting minutes of January eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. Two, approval of the committee of the whole meeting minutes, January eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. Three, approval of the council payable listing of February first, twenty twenty-four in the amount of five million, one hundred thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars and fourteen cents. Four, resolution authorizing the execution of production equipment agreement for Glendale Heights Fest twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, and twenty twenty-six by and between Ron Lemond DBA Quality Concerts in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Five, resolution authorizing the execution of the First Amendment of the Contract with Service Sanitation Incorporated for affordable toilet rental and services for the Village of Glendale Heights. Six, resolution to correct Scrivener's errors and authorize the execution of the First Amendment to the agreement between Bowler Construction Company and the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois for the Water Supply Facility Rehabilitation Project. Seven, resolution to approve and authorize the execution of a change order number two by the, two to the agreement between the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois and Trotter Associates for the furnishing professional engineering services for the water and sewer, water rate study project. Eight, resolution authorizing the execution of change order number one, final, for the Water System Resilience Upgrades Project in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Nine, resolution authorizing the execution of a change order number two, final, for the Norton Avenue and East Schubert Avenue Water Man Replacement Project in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Ten, resolution authorizing the execution of change order number two, final, for the James Court and Pearl Avenue Storm Sewer Improvement Project in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Eleven, resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award and authorizing the execution of a contract for a pair of Neuros Turbo Blower for the wastewater treatment plant. Twelve, motion to approve pay request number three, final, to J. Commune Sewer Services Incorporated for the CDBG Norton Avenue and East Schubert Avenue Water Man Replacement Project. Total amount not to exceed six hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eighteen cents. Thirteen, motion to approve pay request number two to Construction Inc. for the Linda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens Improvement Project. Total amount not to exceed ninety-nine thousand, six dollars and thirty cents. Fourteen, motion to approve pay request number two, final, to Trotter Associates Incorporated for the Water System Resilience Upgrades. Total amount not to exceed sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars and ninety cents. Fifteen, motion to approve pay request number three, final, to Maller Sewer Construction for the James Court Storm Sewer Improvement Project. Total amount not to exceed forty-six thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars and seven cents. Sixteen is approval of consent items.
Is there a motion to approve the concept agenda? Uh, Trusty Schmidt?
I move that the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Trusty Light?
Second, please.
Uh, roll call word, please.
Trusty Schmidt?
Yes.
Trusty Siddiki?
Yes.
Trusty Light?
Yes.
Trusty Meritato?
Yes.
Trusty Pocheck?
Yes.
Trusty Schroder?
Yes.
The concept agenda is approved. Old business, there is none. New business, a motion to waive first reading on new business items number two, three, and four. Is there a motion to waive first reading on new business item two, three, and four? I need motion for that, Trusty Schroder?
So moved.
Trusty Light?
So, second.
Our discussion. None, roll call word, please.
Trusty Siddiki?
Yes.
Trusty Light?
Yes.
Trusty Meritato?
Yes.
Trusty Pocheck?
Yes.
Trusty Schroder?
Yes.
Trusty Schmidt?
Yes.
The motion to waive first reading on new business item two through four is approved. Number two, and orders to amend section five entitled Hotel. Uh, section F entitled Hotel and Motel Text of Chapter Two entitled Village Taxes of Title Three entitled Finance and Taxation of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights, LNI, from of uh January eighteen, twenty twenty-four, COW. Request to waive first reading, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero six. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero six? Uh, Trusty Schmidt?
So moved.
Trusty Schroder?
Second.
Discussion. None, roll call word, please.
Trusty Light?
Yes.
Trusty Meritato?
Yes.
Trusty Pocheck?
Yes.
Trust, Trusty Schroder?
Yes.
Trusty Schmidt?
Yes.
Trusty Siddiki?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash six is approved. Number three, and ordinance to amend section eleven dash two dash two entitled Definitions of Chapter Two entitled Rules and Definitions of Title Eleven entitled zoning regulations of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights, LNI, from the January eighteen, twenty twenty-four, COW. Request to waive first reading, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero seven. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero seven? I need motion for, uh, Trusty Schroder?
So moved.
Trusty Schmidt?
Second.
Discussion. None, roll call word, please.
If we can hold on, my title eleven's not in zoning, is it?
It is.
Yeah, we, we, this has gotta be taken off.
Okay.
Yeah. I thought there were three, but this one was gonna be left off. That, that we can't pass this as a.
Okay, yeah, I think that was something we discussed, um, it must have stuck in here. We can bring it through, it's just housekeeping for the definition, but.
Correct, yeah, it has to go through, it still has to go through the planning commission.
Okay.
It, it's a text amendment, so we can't pass it here without a public hearing first before the planning commission, so. It's, it's a technicality, but it's, it's a process we have.
So we have.
Yeah, so this is, this is withdrawn, there is no mode on this, this is just taken off the agenda.
Taken off the agenda.
I'm sorry, I just was, I put in title eleven in my head and it was.
Oh yeah, no worries.
So is it?
Yeah, we'll go on to the next.
Change order next, number then?
Actually, it should be number three now, you know.
It's, I just leave it as.
And I use to amend section four dash thirteen dash one entitled Definitions of Chapter Thirteen entitled Hotels and Motels of Title Four entitled Business and Licenses Regulations and to add section four dash thirteen dash seven entitled Hotel and Motel Text to Chapter Thirteen entitled Business and Licenses Regulation of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights, LNI from January eighteen, twenty twenty-four, COW. Request to waive first reading, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero eight. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero eight? Trusty Light?
So moved.
Uh, Trusty Schmidt?
So, second.
Uh, excuse me, is that not right?
Discussion.
The ordinance would be at number seven, we just took it off.
No.
Our discussion, none, roll call word, please.
Trusty Meritato?
Yes.
Trusty Pocheck?
Yes.
Trusty Schroder?
Yes.
Trusty Schmidt?
Yes.
Trusty Siddiki?
Yes.
Trusty Light?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero eight is approved. Number five, a resolution appointing members of the ordinance committee for the Village of Glendale Heights, LNI, RES twenty twenty-four dash R dash sixteen. Is there a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash R dash sixteen? Trusty Schroder?
So moved.
Trusty Light?
Second.
Discussion. None, roll call word, please.
Trusty Pocheck?
Yes.
Trusty Schroder?
Yes.
Trusty Schmidt?
Yes.
Trusty Siddiki?
Yes.
Trusty Light?
Yes.
Trusty Meritato?
Yes.
The motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash R dash sixteen is approved. Public discussion, is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on agenda items only? Anyone? None? Okay. Adjunct session, we do not have adjunct, adjunct session. Adjourned, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Uh, excuse me, um, we represent the whole, um, top of every topic of freedom of speech, you know?
Next meeting, Tika.
Yes.
Next meeting.
Following this meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn? Uh, Trusty Schroder?
Motion to adjourn.
Trusty Schmidt?
Second.
Uh, roll call word, please.
Trusty Schroder?
Yes.
Trusty Schmidt?
Yes.
Trusty Siddiki?
Yes.
Trusty Light?
Yes.
Trusty Meritato?
Yes.
Trusty Pocheck?
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned.
All right. Let's do this. All right. I'd like to call the committee of the whole meeting for February first, twenty twenty-four. Um, Marique, could you please note who's here? Do we have any additions? Oh, you're all behaving today, thank you. That's very nice. All right, so. I have uh, I have no committee recommendations, none whatsoever here. Uh, we do have something under discussion regarding Northern Illinois Municipal Electrical Consortium purchase of electric, electricity. Please call on Adam, are you here, Adam?
Yep.
Adam, thank you.
How are ya? Uh, my name's Adam Hoover. I've spoke to the board, I should have looked it up, last fall probably, in regards to the municipal aggregation program that's currently running. A reminder, that is a program that helps your residents, uh, no charge to the residents' rates, but in, in turn, we're uh becoming an EPA green community. So currently, right now, at the cost of nobody, we are supporting renewable energy. I'm here to talk about something different that we've been doing uh with the village for about the past ten or fifteen years. Uh, but your water pumping and a couple of other power contracts for the village, not residents, for the village are expiring in May. And we help renew those and find a better rate than ComEd. Currently, you guys have a rate at about, I should have looked it up again, about four and a half to five cents on your power accounts. Uh, and the ComEd rate's about six point eight cents. Um, so we're helping saving there. However, we do things a touch differently, and that's why I'm here today. Uh, we do a big group bid. Uh, we get about a hundred forty municipalities in Northern Illinois. And we purchase energy together as a collective rather than going out individually. Um, kind of like a Costco or Sam's Club, our bigger purchasing power allows for lower rates. However, the, the market is a commodity, the power market is a commodity, and prices change from day to day. So on March sixth, we will be having this year's bid. Uh, and we are asking the resolution, I believe that uh is either here or will be in front of you soon. Um, we're asking for signing authority for a member of the staff to be able to sign and execute a contract that day. We cannot hold the price and bring it to the board, hold it overnight, and go to the next day. So what we're asking for today, and by the way, this is something that's been approved multiple times in the past with the same board, uh, is signing authority for a staff member to uh execute a contract on March sixth of this year.
And we'll bring a resolution next board meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, well, quick question. These rates, are they a negotiated rate when it comes time? I mean, is this like a bidding process that you gotta gamble at a specific?
So we bid, we bid out with about five suppliers, uh, five very trusted suppliers. Um, because if we ever have any billing issues, we wanna be able to go to people that we know. Uh, which Bill and I are dealing with right now, actually, with some streetlights. Um, but yes, we, it's a competitive bid.
Mohammed?
Yeah, is this uh, like the resident has to sign up for?
This is not, so I, that's what I was here previously, this is a completely separate program.
This is separate, okay.
This is for the villages, like you guys are paying ComEd or, you know, right now. This is for those accounts.
What about those? This is tricky for the water pumping station.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
That's it.
Yep, no residents involved in this program, but we do help with that one, which is why I understand your confusion.
Good.
Any other questions? No?
They're all wellhouses.
I'm sorry, what's that?
It's all wellhouses.
Okay, I'm good with that. Um, so are we looking for just a uh?
A direction.
A direction to go ahead and do it?
Yes, just permission for us to uh enter into an agreement with them on March sixth. We'll bring a resolution back next board meeting.
Perfect, everyone all in agreeance?
Yes.
No, no?
Go for it.
Go for it.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
That one worked out well. All right. Let's go on to the ever-so-exciting uh public comment. Anyone in the public like to address the board on anything?
Any village item.
Any village item, sorry.
No, any freedom of speech or free movement.
No Tika would be any village business.
Any village-related item. Could you please state your name and just what town you live in?
Uh, yes, Cheryl Fran, Glendale Heights, on Fullerton. When you decided to run to become mayor, did you have any goals or a platform for this village? Or was it just self-gratification? I've noticed in the three years, almost three years, that you have been our mayor, you have shown nothing or done nothing to any achievement. You also have caused a resignation for, at least four amazing, hard-working employees. The fact that you still have an appointed department head to their job is disgusting. You've lost the insurance, you're drowning the village in funds towards your lawsuits, to you, and your investigation to fellow employees. This has cost the village over a quarter of a million dollars. At the September seventh board meeting, you showed no sympathy or integrity towards the previous administration. You would not voice the ordinance stating the Linda Jackson Senior Center, and you made sure you voted no. At that same meeting, you yourself said that if anybody was to misuse funds or steal money from the village, you'd have them removed. So on behalf of your own words, you should remove yourself. Thank you.
But thank you for attending the senior center events, we're grateful for the support.
Thank you. And would anyone else like to address this board? Good evening. Can you just state your name and town, please?
Mister Citizen, Glendale Heights, Illinois. Well. Baseball program. Back twelve years ago, the majority of these board members disbanded the Glenside Youth Baseball Program. At that time, there was over three hundred participants. Now we're down about a hun- down to about a hundred. We wouldn't have had that problem if it wasn't for the majority of these board members. Quoting Mister Meritato, who was in charge of that program at that particular time. Um, Mister Siddiki, who? Did you even make any comments about the issue with the child at Glenside Middle School? We've had a lot of bullying going on in this, and that's your district. Uh, but you did mention about the one in Naperville.
If we can stick to village business.
No, this is village business. Yes, it is. Glenside, Glenside Middle School is village business. And you're the attorney that had that baseball program.
It's school district.
Uh, no, it's, it's village residents. So it is, uh, and this, and uh Mister Mayor wasn't even uh, uh, brought to speed about that when it happened.
Uh, I wanna make a comment.
Oh, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Be quiet, be quiet.
It's Christmas turn for right now.
Yeah, be quiet. You know, this is a joke, this town. This, this. This this town is a joke with all these resident, uh, representatives, or so-called representatives. Mister Barnes is not a Democratic, he may have been elected it, but he's not representing the Democratic community. You guys are all Republicans, except one voted Democrat and the last one. But I think that was on a, uh, technicality, he decided to change his vote. But all of you are Republicans, we all know it. I call them Repucalkins because you make me all puke. Um, the other thing is too, Mister Pappas, how come the mayor wasn't advised of the situation? I had an email before he even knew about it with regards to a video. I had a copy. I withheld that copy in respect to the parents, and I was told by the superintendent that they went to the Iman of the mosque. Why didn't they go to the parents or anything like that? And why wasn't the mayor, uh, made aware of the issue at the time?
Ask him that question. Ask him, ask him if you received the message. Ask him, no, no, ask him right now, ask him.
Did you receive a message prior to?
Uh, Mister Epstein, uh, chief filed charges against me, and I do not want to comment because of the under, I don't want other charges.
Okay.
That's, I'm tired.
And Mister Flint, you're the village administrator, why don't you, we got all these, uh, uh, issues with bullying going on in the schools. Um, you know, we've had Mark Warren.
Chris, I'm sorry, time is up.
No, it's not up, it's only two and a half minutes.
Thank you, sir.
No, I'm gonna continue, I got another half minute.
Thank you.
And now I'm gonna sit here for the next thirty seconds, and if you guys keep on interrupting me, I'll continue to stay up here.
Chris.
No, 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 you're part of the problem too. You're part of the.
Chris, I've heard enough.
Good for you.
Okay, now you're done, your time is up, you need to step down, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm not, no, I'm not going to. Mister Mayor, do not resign.
Follow him, he's the chairman, so please.
Okay. Do not resign.
Uh, Mister Light?
If a payment is once, you know, just.
One of us, we're gonna just slow down, slow down, take a breath.
I'm high.
Hi. First of all, is there anyone else in the public that would like to make a comment about village business? One second, we'll get your, we'll get rebuttal.
Good afternoon, or good evening. My name is Marietta Britt, and I've lived in Glendale Heights since nineteen seventy seven, as I have constantly reminded the board. And I do wanna say that, Mayor, only zero point two percent of the village residents voted in that election in twenty one. You won that election by two votes, as noted by the DuPage County, um, election board. So we we can't say that it was by the majority of the residents, it's the majority of those who voted. So based on that, I'm telling everyone, get out and vote. Make your voice heard. Okay, but let me, let me just tell you, and I will stay to my three minutes, and so Mike, give me that finger at two, and I'll be, no, this one.
That one, I'll lay that one, yes, you got it.
Okay, as most of you know, you've met my daughter. I've told my daughter that the highest level of the thing that I find the most important is integrity. Integrity above all. If you maintain your integrity, you always do the right thing. Compassion and fairness, ability to lose gracefully, has the whole best interest at heart, not just your own. Are you a productive citizen? Are you able to listen and consider all points of view? And as a part of government, you are a servant to the people that have put you in office and those who did not vote for you. So what people don't wanna see in our government? Accusations. Single focus goals. In other words, did you have just one reason for getting into office? Name calling. I've heard the word racist the most I've ever heard in a village board meeting in the past two years. This is disgraceful. Um, self-centeredness, thank you. Overblown sense of self. Do you know who I am? I know people use that. And then arrests. And I will tell you, I've had conversations with state representatives, and they say, oh, Glendale Heights? And they kinda snicker. Glendale Heights is not the place where we need this kind of government. I will tell you that the board has always treated me with respect, and they've always listened to me, and I've worked very closely with the board and employees of Glendale Heights on some work that was going on behind my house. So I want to wholeheartedly say that you all have my support. But Mayor, you do not have my support. As a person of color in Glendale Heights, I did not vote for you, although I've heard the rumor that every single black person did. I don't choose my politicians based on color. I choo- choose them based on those first list of qualities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like? Could you, for record, just state your name and town you live in?
Michael Long Taveros, longtime resident of Glendale Heights, and obviously candidate for village president in the next election. First, a felony charge for filing a false police report against Mister Mohamed Siddiqui. And now a misdemeanor for assaulting a police officer, specifically Police Chief George Pappas. Mister Siddiqui, Chief Pappas, you have my full support. You have the full support of the entire Board of Trustees, and most importantly, you have the support of all of our residents, not just here, but everybody listening, everybody who resides in Glendale Heights. Political uncertainty is having a significant impact on our community. You have the Village Board of Trustees making a formal request for Chadri Kokar's resignation. You have a letter from the Democratic Party making a formal request for Chadri Kokar's resignation. Chadri Kokar has nowhere to go and no one to talk to. It's called political assassination. Please take note of the first three letters of the second word. This person has been shunned by fellow political leaders surrounding our community and even our residents. His days serving in political circles are over. Indictments, not just convictions, can erode public trust and our political system. Our administration and Board of Trustees have worked hard to ensure transparency is at the forefront, and day-to-day services they provide to our residents continue without disruption. However, it is becoming more difficult to perform their sworn duties, given the circus-like atmosphere that's been created by just one person. Also, the economic impact. At this moment, it's hard to measure economic repercussions since this individual took the position of village president. Both large and small businesses currently residing in Glendale Heights may delay investments or expansion plans. New businesses may even look elsewhere, given the political turmoil. Time will tell. We need to send a strong message to the business community and say, hey, we are here to support you, and we'll continue to invest in infrastructure to accommodate future needs. To mitigate the impact of political uncertainty, we need to be open and transparent with our communications, and efforts to rebuild trust within the community is critically essential. We must respect the judicial system and let things play out in the courts. However, from a character standpoint and for the benefit of Glendale Heights, I strongly support the Village Board of Trustees and urge you, Chadri Kokar, to step aside and resign so we begin the rebuilding process and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else that would like to to address the board? Right after, how's that?
I wasn't going to, but, um, Mister Epstein, Kai's is in the village of Glendale Heights.
Please state your name.
Al Rebecca Tyber. I have a Glendale Heights address. Kai's is in the village of Glendale Heights, and Trustee Siddiqui does, is not in District fifteen. He's south of North Avenue and has nothing to do with fifteen or sixteen. So please get your backs straight. Oh, yes, I do. Anyway.
Address the board.
All right, anyway, so that and. Okay. Also, um, I, when I came in, I'm hearing you yelling at Mister Ante Rivas, saying that he's a loser. And I'm speaking to the mayor right now. And if it wasn't for Mike Ante Rivas, you would not be sitting there. Because li- you, he's the one that brought Linda to court because she did not get enough signatures to run. And she had over a thousand votes. You had four hundred and something, he had four hundred and something. That is not a representation of the village. You spent forty-five minutes telling every single person that walked into your office how much everybody loves you, how much, how much you worked, and your agenda was to get Sohal Bari off a cricket and to take Pakistan Day away from him. Those were the two agendas that I knew as the secretary, that you said you don't need a personal assistant, you need a secretary, which you don't even have anymore. And you have Doug Flint, who is in charge of the entire, actually, vil- Doug is in charge of this village. And he's in charge of all of your executive staff, and there's normally an assistant. So now he has, he's your secretary, you're using him as your secretary, and he needs an assistant to help him run this village, to help him run all these departments. And I know this, you don't think it's important, but you have no clue what it really takes, the hours that he's putting in. I mean, he should be burning out right now. I know, I know the hours that these people put in. And it's a shame that you cannot appoint him as he should be and give him as an assistant that he desperately needs. Is he, and now he, you're act, you're asking him to be his secretary to read the consent agenda. That has never been done by a bo- uh, mayor before, having somebody else read the consent agenda for you. It's just, you know, maybe, I don't know my facts, but I'm not lying. I'm not telling a lies, I, I, I.
Three minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Beck, you still had some time.
Yeah, but, okay, thanks, Beck. Would anyone else like to address, go ahead, yeah, you're up. Just state your name and town you live in for me, for record.
Hi, my name is Abid Rashid. I lived in Glendale Heights for last more than thirty years.
Thank you.
And I have been seeing the development in this community all along. And I'm very proud to be the resident of Glendale Heights. I have a lot of friends in others, uh, villages who live there. And I compare the services that I receive from this village. And I always hear a word from them, hey, your village is great. So I have compared it to many, many villages. Many of my friends who moved out, they came back. And if you guys ne- need to know the name, I can give you the names. Several of my friends who moved out came back because they like to live in this village. So I appreciate all of you for doing a great job for the village. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else like to?
Good to see you all. Good to see, always good to see you all. What is really nice to see is the people.
Could you?
More people, more people. My name is Martika King.
Thank you.
Uh, resident of Glendale Heights. Um, I have the constitution in my hand, you know, I carry it with me. And what I wanna say is a little off the topic of what everybody's kinda focused on.
Can we just keep it to village business?
This is village, this is village, yeah. Simple, it's gonna be real short, under three.
All right.
I assure you, under three. As long as I keep breathing, um, yeah, remembering, um, okay, so basically, we're a divided village. And if you make it big, it's the nation, divided nation, village divided, heavily divided here. Okay, so what unites the village? God, in my humble opinion. Um, whatever faith you are, in my humble opinion, it's God. And, uh, also, um, oh geez, I knew I should have written it down, darn it. Um, okay, bear with me. Uh, basically, what we need to do is impeach the President Joe Biden, and that's village. That's village, it affects, and we need to go mega, we need to make America great again, God save us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tika.
Is there anybody else that would like to address this board? Oh, please, do, come on, step up. If you can, just state your name and town you live in.
My name is Shamim Sheikh, and I'm living here in the Glendale Heights for the last three years. And I'm very much, and I belong from Pakistan. So I'm very much proud of that the the mayor is also from Pakistan. And this Glendale Heights is really, really a very good, the people living in, lot, lot of people living, Pakistani people in this area. I, and I must say that they must support the mayor, Khoke, because this is really very, very significant significant thing that Pakistani mayor is handling, and I also asked all of them, especially those who are Muslims or non-Muslim, because he's really a very nice guy who's, who's cooperating with the people. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address this board? Okay, I just, you know, I'm gonna, let me open it up to the board itself, if I can, we'll keep it, you know, simple and simple and. Mohammed, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, so I just wanna clarify a couple of things, uh, that unfortunate incident which happens at the Glenside. I've been in touch with Chief Pappas after that, and it's not that I don't wanna talk about that, but it is respect of the parents. Uh, Chief Pappas, uh, talked to me and, uh, they talked to, uh, the kid's parents, and they don't want anything to do this. They don't wanna talk about that. They don't want to circulate any kind of video about that kid. It's an unfortunate incident. It has been handled by our police and police chief according to the law. And we are waiting for the results, and so I don't do politics on kids. I don't do petty, uh, comments, I don't do petty politics as Mister Epstein was urging me to do, so I just wanna clarify this. Because it's, it involves minors, so I have to be very careful. We have to understand the privacy with minors, which I think Mister Epstein doesn't, so. And Chief Pappas is fully aware of the situation, is handling it professionally. That's all I have to say, thank you.
How about you, Bill? Anything, Bill?
Nothing.
Nothing?
Let, uh, after this speech.
After, okay. Mary, anything would you like?
Uh.
Nothing to address?
I wanna say something, but let, let the mayor speak, I wanna, I wanna hear what he has to say.
You speak first.
Go ahead, Chancellor.
I read my statement at the beginning of the meeting, so that's all I got to say.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you.
I just wanna clear up, I just wanna clear up the secretary, why he doesn't have a secretary? Cause we have four secretaries, one was forced out, one quit. One lasted another two months and she quit. And the last one got moved to a different department. So that's why the board did not give him a secretary. We will not put another secretary and get Stew again.
That's our secretary.
Our secretary. We will not do it, because we do not wanna get Stew again. Already cautious, I, already, we already spent over four hundred thousand dollars by the time we get done with all the lawsuits and all the investigations that got here. So that's why there will be no secretary.
All right. That all you?
Yeah, that, that.
That's it? You're good? Okay, Mayor, you're up.
That's about, he mentioned new, uh, issues secretary. My first secretary, uh, is here, Ms. Becky, and she was friend of former mayor for forty years. She worked for me few month, and she wanted to work, you know, and she said that I wanted to work, but I'll perform, I don't want to discuss, but, there was some interest, you know, conflict of interest. So I got second secretary, uh, she was, I believe, uh, uh, who was her? Uh, just Ramon, what was secretary's name?
Aliyah.
No sec, uh, yeah.
Aliyah.
No, 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 before that. Cheryl, Cheryl. Cheryl came as a temporary.
No, it was Aliyah first, so.
Let me, let me speak now, let me speak. She came, second secretary was Cheryl.
So it's get your face straight.
And still.
I got it right here.
Let me speak.
Go ahead.
Let me speak. There's a reason you are six, seven people, you don't let me speak.
You even speak right now, but what happened?
That's the reason you have this problem.
I don't have a problem, you're the guy, you're the guy that gets attention from.
Cheryl is very nicely, let me speak, let me speak. Cheryl, whenever she passes by, by my office, she come to me, she sit over there, she we have nice, still we have nice conversation, we talk, we laugh, you know. Third was secretary. Third was secretary, that was not, that was hired, and for, for some reason, she had to move back to his, her country, you know, Australia. And she's doing well over there, she's attorney, we still talk with each other. And fourth one is, uh, Jais. This board meeting, this board people, you know, members, they gave her so much hard time that now she has to file lawsuit against their, this board member.
Right, fair.
That is pending. This is what this board meet, uh, this board are doing. And same way, board is.
The board was against.
Let me talk, let me talk, let me talk, let me talk, let me talk. And now, no, no, Matt, you can't talk, no, that's my time.
Guys?
My time.
I'm on your spaceship and.
Now my time, she filed lawsuit, and she filed lawsuit against board. And third, third, third issue is, Tracy Siddiqui.
Hold on, please.
Tracy Siddiqui, no, no, Tracy Siddiqui, his brother-in-law was getting caught in cricket contract. They came hundred twenty thousand dollars, and this board member did not give to, that guy, you know, who paid, who was, who given, has given, you know, paid four hundred twenty thousand dollars. But they were giving his brother-in-law, Tracy Siddiqui's brother-in-law, for five thousand dollars, thousand dollars. That was the reason. These people are doing corruption, I want.
Motion to adjourn.
Now they don't want to listen.
There, 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 there.
Yeah.
We're gonna call a question, okay?
No, this is, this is the reason.
Motion to adjourn.
There's a motion on the floor.
There's a motion on the floor.
Of course.
Motion to adjourn. Do I have a second, Mary?
Second.
Yes, okay. All in favor?
All in.
Aye. Opposed? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.